I'd like to call the meeting to order. We can stand and say the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, everybody, for coming. I don't believe we have any visitors signed in wishing to speak. We can move into -- I've had -- I did have one piece of communication from one of the prospective BOSI's board members just asking for our support. One I shared with you already, and then another one came. As far as Boarding Committee reports, the dessert forum.
Yes, I don't want to steal any of Tony's thunder for the next piece of the conversation, but basically Rick Timms did a presentation mostly regarding the formula that they use for the foundation aid and how flawed it is. In general, he said that the pie is too small. All this was in preparation for our meeting on Saturday, so we would have statistical talking points to present to our politicians. So he suggested we go to the legislators and tell them that they need to find more money for our kids. And he pointed out that the data is anywhere between 12 and 19 years old that they're using to come up with the formula. But he also cautions that be careful what you wish for because if they improve the formula and bring everything up to date, in general, in this area, some of the population numbers have actually gone down. And so it may favor New York City and Long Island if we looked closer at the numbers. But there's a lot of moving parts. There's a census coming up, and there is a redistricting in 2020. And so, you know, the onus is going to be on us to make sure that everyone gets counted. And, you know, the talking points aren't just around how many kids are in the classroom. They're around, you know, if you lose one kid, you might gain another kid. You know, you lose two kids, gain one kid, and that one kid has special needs or, you know, is an English language learner or something along those lines. So just because there's one fewer child does not mean that it is less expensive to educate the children.
Okay, thank you. Our next report is going to be on our Board Self-Evaluation Tool that I had asked Mrs. Goldhawk and Mrs. McLaughlin to look into what is available. And so after their presentation, I'm actually going to have to hold the board about moving forward with this potential tool because we do have it on our board goals to do a board self-evaluation. So, Mrs. Goldhawk, Mr. McLaughlin.
Great, thank you so much. Mrs. Goldhawk, if you'll help me with the technology.
Absolutely.
I'll do a lot of the talking.
Sure.
Do this great team effort. As we go through this presentation, board members, this is going to look very familiar to you because we already use an interface through Supereval that we use to evaluate our superintendent. And so it looks very similar. In fact, if we were to use this tool for a board self-evaluation, it actually would become a drop-down on the menu within Supereval that we already have. Secondly, some of the screenshots are going to look familiar to you because they do have the standards and the rubric that --
Oh, yeah.
Yeah. Yes. I should have had -- you should have worked out a hand signal. They do have the rubric that was developed by NISBA, which was published and sent out to us in October 2018.
Which has also been provided to you as part of your documents tonight.
Yes, and those are for you to keep and use. We'll eventually use them. Okay, so on this first slide, you'll see most familiar on the interface is going to be very easy for somebody that has been using it before. This is a four-step process, and general board members will be very heavily involved in the first step of the process. So what it's showing here, the first step of the process, which would be you would click on that board self-evaluation. We can click to the next slide. And again, familiarity here, but it would show each of our board member names, and we would be able to go in and start evaluating our board. Now, we do this on an annual basis at our board retreats, but this would be something we would do prior to the board retreat. And then we could look at this at our board retreat with a lot of data that we could work with together.
It's important to note that while we can see everybody's progress, you can't go into somebody's individual evaluation. You just go into your own. So each individual member, you can see where they are in the steps of the process, same as the superintendent evaluation. It's also -- you probably are going to say this at some point, but the superintendent can participate in this process if we choose as a board to allow him to rate us as an external party. But that would be the only addition that we would have to the group.
And something else to note is our board would set different -- like different due dates for each of the steps, so we would definitely keep ourselves accountable, something I didn't note on the last slide. As you click into the next slide, you'll see this is just a single standard with a single practice that we would be evaluating ourselves on. And as -- I'm sorry, which one is it? So as you can see, vision, leadership, and accountability, something that we would definitely want to rate ourselves on. And as we said, this is part of our NISBA standards that we would be using, which are already implemented in the Supereval system.
And you can see it's darkened on the left one there, which is standard one. But each of the five standards is across the top there, so you can click in any order and complete them in any order, same as the superintendent evaluation.
Okay, as you can see, the rating system is something we are also already familiar with. We would be able to rate ourselves up to as high as highly effective or no score ineffective for each principle that we are rating ourselves on.
And they have the definitions in the rubric, again, similar to what we're all familiar with, for each one of the standards. So this is 1A. The board develops shared vision, blah, 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 whatever. Can't read it from here, but there's all those pieces in each one of the standards that we would do the self-evaluation on. And you can add comments down here, which actually are required, and you can add supporting evidence. So again, as Mrs. McLaughlin said, if we do this in advance of our board retreat, which is in the, you know, late summer, early fall, whenever we choose to do it each year, we can have this as a tool to use throughout the year. You know, set it up at our retreat or for our retreat, and then use it and rate ourselves and gather information throughout the year so that we can have that at the end of the year to see how we did.
Great, so this view that we're looking at right here would be step two. This is actually our president's view. And as you can see up at the top of the screen, there looks like four different capacities to view these different results that we're looking at. This first result sheet is actually showing an average. So this is taking every board member's response, and also the superintendent, if he were to be involved, and putting it into a category that would average out every single evaluation. So if you wanted to just see an overall view of how we were kind of landing, this is something that the president could pull up, something that we could use as a board to discuss. But if you go to the next view, you would see that there are -- this would show our individual responses. Now, at this point, we can identify which board member would be an outlier in any of these categories, but that also would enable us to have a very meaningful conversation, allowing those different board members to voice why they would think, well, I don't think that we're just developing in this one category, whereas several other board members were thinking we were highly effective.
Let me drive discussion. And this is the third screenshot there up at the top. You see the button is on the highest rated competencies, which allows us, again, to drive discussion and celebrate our successes in terms of what we all average, on average, felt our highest rated ones were. And the next slide, oh, and then we don't have a slide for it. But you can also choose the lowest rated competencies there also to see where we all feel like we can have areas to improve.
Right, and this is where step three would come in for the board evaluation process. So this is where we would identify our top three areas of improvement. And this is something that wouldn't just stay static. We wouldn't just say, wow, we really need to do better, and then put it to bed for a year. We would be able to look at this and evaluate our progress throughout the year, which would take us to step four. And step four would allow us to go back in and evaluate ourselves on our improvements. We would then be able to, obviously, required would be the comments, but also it provides some supporting evidence. We could revisit this as much as once a month. We could revisit it once a quarter. We could revisit it however many times we needed to, depending on how very important we felt that improvement would be.
Is this tool like the superintendent's evaluation, where it would line all our kind of, kind of like people -- whatever you want to call those little icons up, and so you'll see if there's any outliers? So if we're all effective, think something's effective, we can focus on things where maybe there's a little bit of differential?
Yes, absolutely. If you look at the radio bars up here, showing the average board values was the previous screen that had us all grouped together. But this is showing the individual board responses. These are multiple people with the multiple heads on there. And then there's one outlier here, one outlier here. So you're able to identify who those people are too, so you can -- we can address that in conversation.
Great.
Something that we didn't have in this presentation, but we wanted to talk about, the cost. The cost for this tool would be $550 annually, but that is BOSI's aidable. So at 70%, we were kind of estimating it would be about $165 a year. But we feel it's a very dynamic tool. It would keep this very prevalent and fresh in our minds. We wouldn't just be visiting it once on a piece of paper. It would be something that we could interact with and really, you know, foster some continuous improvement in our board, something that we enjoy in our own school districts or in Midasville near them.
Great.
Any questions? Have we never done anything like this before? There have never been board self-evaluations? We always evaluate ourselves. We do that at our annual retreat. So we do have the opportunity to do that every year, and then we do agree on some goals.
Not to this --
Yes. There was once, maybe three or four years ago, one of the retreats, we, the facilitator at that time, did this type of a tool. It was different, but I personally found it really helpful at that time. You know, it was a nice tool to be able to focus on us a little bit and, you know, what our goals are in addition to, you know, the strategic plan that we're working on as a board.
Is it completely separate from Supereval? Or is it a single sign-on?
It's a single sign-on. It's a single.
That was a duet.
So it is --
It was a single voice.
If you go into Supereval, they add it on as a drop-down choice in that menu. So it's all the same platform, and it's just two separate things right in there. Yeah, and they, you know, when we spoke to Mr. Hornig, you know, they wanted to make this affordable to help really drive at home with the boards that this is a great tool to use. It mirrors the NISBA standards, which you can see in that handout that Deb printed out, Ms. Custody printed out for us, that has all of the different competencies that we'd be rating ourselves on. Yes, they would all be within the system.
And who else sees this information?
Us.
Our boards.
It's just internal. I assume that it also, I believe, did Mr. Hornig say that it creates a single foilable page like the superintendent self-e -- or the superintendent evaluation?
That's not something he showed us, but I'm assuming, yes, that would be.
Obviously, the goal is to make us more highly effective.
Right. Yeah, just allow for communication.
Correct.
And like we said, this tool came out right when the standards were published, so right around October 2018. So it's new, but it's obviously a system that's been tested within Supereval with the superintendent's evaluations. And a lot of districts are taking a look at this and really finding it very helpful and effective. There is a lot of interest, he said. Right now, Williamsville has just adopted it and has started using it. Kenton was using the paper version prior to the electronic version being available. But other than that, you know, we'd be pretty close to the forefront of using this as a tool.
All right, so what I want to just make sure is is everybody good with moving forward? Obviously, there is a cost associated with this, so I just want to make sure the board is good with moving forward with using this tool. We'll start using it, you know, for this year, at the end of this year, and moving forward as we do with the Supereval, so. Mr. Smith?
Okay, move forward.
Yeah, good idea.
As I mind, so. Let's move forward with the --
And I assume we have some board, you know, funding or, you know, some --
We have a board budget.
A budget, so.
We can go, we'll do a fundraiser.
Maybe, I don't know, I guess if, give it to Ms. Custody to arrange for that, just.
Yes.
I know you handled Supereval for us, so.
Yep, I'll do the same.
Okay.
And that's, Mr. Hornig said that once it's approved, you just let him know and process the PO, and he just runs it on in the system.
Okay, great.
Great. With that, we'll turn it over to the superintendent's report.
Thanks, I look forward to my invitation to participate.
Will you get a chance to write it out? I know we should think about the timing on that.
Mine over the summer, I'm a little busy. So that sounds like exciting stuff. Thank you for all the legwork you did on that. I know that's been a goal for two years, and it's nice to see it come together. Mrs. Wazinski is back from her temporary leave, which we are thankful for. And she's jumping right in with draft two of our proposed budget. I think the goal is to update more information that we have relative to the governor's budget, CPI, the tax cap are the main things.
Thank you. So as Mr. Pennella stated, we will go over the update. So some of the information will be the same as our December presentation. Any new information is highlighted in blue. So I'll kind of breeze over the stuff that hasn't changed. If you have any questions, just let me know and we'll stop. So we'll update our revenues and expenditure assumptions, look at our overall budget forecast, and then review our updated summary. So on the revenue side, we have finalized our property tax levy. Our CPI is restricted to 2%, so it is CPI or 2%, whichever is lower. So with CPI over 2, we were restricted to 2%. That's just one part of the calculation for our tax cap. In December, we were projecting a 3.6 tax cap levy, and the reason that it's decreased to 3% is because our ban that we sold this past week came in with very favorable rates. So our payment for next year is about $214,000 lower than we anticipated. So while that reduces our expenditures, it also reduces our exclusion, our capital exclusion in our tax cap. So a little less spending, but a little less on our tax levy as well. State aid, the difference between our November projections and the governor's projections in January indicated a $43,000 increase in foundation aid. Everything else stayed relatively the same. Under miscellaneous revenues, we are now showing a decrease of just over, just under 1%. And that is due to an increase in interest earnings. So we left all the other numbers the same. But now that we are a couple months into our treasury bills for this year, we've increased our revenues for interest next year to $75,000. So we used to be in the teens. This year, we increased it to $100,000, and next year, we're projecting $175,000. We still feel that's conservative as we're only a few months into our investing, and we want to make sure that we are able to realize whatever number we project. So with those changes, our increase in revenue is 1.32%, which is about $800,000 more in revenue over this current year. On the expenditure side, our TRS rate came in at 8.86, so current year is 10.63. In December, we were using a 9.8, 9.5 figure. So we were able to decrease our expenditures an additional $236,000 due to that 1% change. So that was a significant benefit for us. We do need to be careful and make sure we're mindful that while a 1% decrease is a savings of 236, a 1% increase is an increase of that same amount. So we will need to be careful in the future.
Yeah, there is a lot of caution. I mean, there's also a lot of people that are thrilled with the decrease in the rates, but there's also a lot of caution because it's based on a five-year snapshot of the market. And a really good year is going to be dropping off. And we're adding the most recent year, which, you know, wasn't the best, particularly towards the end in the month of December there. So there is a lot of caution out there that this may temporarily be a temporary reduction, and we may see increases in the future. I think it was the fifth year that is still on the books was something like an 18% earnings for the fund that year. So that is going to drop off, and we'll add probably a more normal year, which, again, leaves us a reason to be a little bit cautious and protective.
It is a seesaw. When I first got on the board, it was 6. something percent, shot up to 18 over that term, and then now it's back down to in the 8s. Maybe it went to like 21, 22.
Well, even if the rate were to stay exactly the same, our salaries are increasing every year. So there's always, you know, there'll be an increase even if there was no change in rate. So an increase in the rate just comes back. Our workers' compensation premium, we had a good year, so our modifier was a little low. So we are conservatively expecting about a $20,000 decrease in our premium this year. It might be a little higher than that. We'll know more with our March presentation. We did not have changes in general support or instruction. We did have the BOSI's meeting early in February, but we haven't finalized the calculations, so we'll include those changes in March, which actually works out well because we include the new board avail in there as well. We did not make changes to transportation from the December projection. And then under debt service, we still have an increase of about $500,000, but it was over $700,000 in our last presentation. And again, that's due because of a very favorable sale of our ban for our Phase 2 capital project. So overall, our expenditures are estimated to increase under 3%, which is $1.7 million. Benefits are staying somewhat stable from current year because we have an increase in health insurance and a decrease in TRS that are fairly close. And then a large change in our debt service of decreasing that about $214,000. So that would leave us with an estimated expenditure projection of $60,286,000. So overall, this budget with 1.3% increase in revenues and just under 3% increase in expenditures leaves us with under $1 million in gap. We were about 1.3, just over 1.3. So we have closed some of that. And we do have some additional items that we'll be including in the March presentation, such as retirements and any program changes that we make, our BOSI's update. And then we'll be able to make sure that we are either closing that gap or identifying it to figure out what we're going to do with that. And then hopefully by April 1st, we'll have our updated state aid, and any increase there will help close our gap. So revenues are looking like they will increase just under $800,000. Expenditures about 1.7, and again, that's before any program changes. Overall, we have a $1 million gap. We do have a $500,000 fund balance allocation, but it is offset by a $500,000 appropriation for unexpected health insurance expenditures. So the plan is to not use it, which would mean that we wouldn't be using any of that fund balance. But it's there. In the event our health insurance costs come in way over our projections and we have significant high-cost claimants, we want to make sure that we're not pushing up on our overall appropriation. Our gap closures remain the same, increases from state aid, any salary breakage from retirements, spending reductions, fund balance allocations, and then if any appropriation from reserves or possible increase above the cap. So currently, our cap is, our tax cap is 3%, but that is the board's decision on what level you want to increase that. You can take it up to the cap. You can go below the cap. You can choose to go over the cap. We do need to submit our intentions by March 1st, so this would be the meeting that we would need to know the board's wishes on where we're going to go with that.
And because we have limited information that can be adjusted as the state budget is finalized? Or are we stuck with that once we submit it?
We do have the ability to change it, to revise it. We have to submit it by March 1st, but if the board were to adopt a budget in April and chose to change that, whether it was lower or higher, we can log in and we can update that.
So the question is, is everybody okay with us submitting that we intend to stay tax cap compliant with a levy of 3.01%?
Hold the board?
So our next budget presentation will be at one of your March meetings, and we'll also talk about fund balance during that month. We will have any recommendations for program enhancements or any areas that maybe we can reduce to help close that gap. And we'll also calculate any retirements that have come in where we might have some salary breakage and benefit breakage that we can account for to help close that gap.
So there's no retirements in there?
Not in this, no.
Well, there's one that was known to us prior to the deadline that was incorporated.
In the December budget.
In the December budget, yeah.
Yes, we didn't add any in here.
We'll be approving some tonight, I think, that will be added in.
Yeah. The, I mean, Mrs. Wazinski has brought a pretty high level of sophistication to our internal operations, so I appreciate that. You know, she starts with a line-by-line look at the budget. And one of the things that Mrs. Wazinski and Mrs. Williams are doing is trying to make sure the structure of the budget is set up to minimize the number of transfers that are needed from code to code. So you may have seen over the last couple years a decent amount of transfers, but then when they build the budget beginning for the next year, they're accounting for those to make sure we don't have to annually do that, so things are coded appropriately. So in doing so, you know, we're trying to also build some cushion into our budget relative to the areas that our auditors have identified as areas that we should have cushion in, particularly special education. And we identify, you know, not only teaching salaries, which can be enrollment-driven with special education, but also outside placements, you know, which can be quite costly, which sometimes we don't know about now for next year. So our goal is to try to offset whatever remaining gap we may have. You know, now it's $963,000. We're optimistic moving forward. It will see it closer to, you know, $500,000 or $600,000. But we also would like to try to identify in an appropriate way where our auditors have suggested, you know, cushion that will be equal to or greater than that amount of our remaining gap to try to ensure that through successful monitoring of the budget, we won't have to use that fund balance. So that's our goal. And then, of course, we would have the $500,000 set aside for max loss for healthcare, which, right now, we are trending in the right direction with healthcare. We just had a recent meeting. So I think there's reason for optimism, and once we transition to the next piece in the report, I can talk a little bit about the priorities that have been established for advocacy.
If I could just add, in my meeting, so I was in last week and signed off on our new bond. And our bond counsel did comment, like, or our ban, no, yes, I'm sorry. But our attorney with Hudson Russ did comment. But our attorney with Hudson Russ did comment that our rate was phenomenal. He did not even expect us to get where it was. He thought we'd be too, a little over 2%. So, I think, you know, this, while we may be tempted to use our reserves, they are helping us in reducing our borrowing cost as well, so, by, as Mrs. Wazinski probably can attest to, so.
Yeah.
With our bond ratings.
It was 1.888 with $180,000 in premiums on the $16 million band. So it was wonderful. We had either, I think we had seven different companies respond, maybe nine, seven or nine. So we had great response. It's a one-year band, it'll be paid off next year, and then we'll go to permanent financing. But it was, it's a great way for us to fund the capital project, but still maintain costs.
I think the comment when I was there for the very brief time at the beginning of the meeting was, you know, that he's done a lot of these lately, and he hasn't seen rates as good as the ones he saw from our issue, so that's good. Any questions?
Were they all in line, or was the 1.88 significantly better than the others, or?
The rates averaged between 3 and 3.5%. And it was the premiums that were offered on top of that that made the difference. So the premiums ranged from like $80,000 to $240,000. So you have to take the rate and the premium and net them together. So 1.88 was the best rate, was the winning rate. It's the same company that purchased our last bond. So it was nice to have that, because they knew we would pay it, they know our history. So I think that helps drive our rate a little bit. But it went up to 2.5, which $16 million is significant.
I also like to thank Mr. Vivalo. I know, we had a lot of discussion at the board table about interest rates, and he was really the motivation behind us, you know, looking at our investment options and looking at, you know, where we can do a little better with that. And as Mrs. Wazinski reported, I think we've scratched the surface right now with our reserve money and some money that's set aside for people that elect to get 26 pays versus 20 pays. And that is resulting in some really decent projected interest earnings, and, you know, although our estimate is conservative, to increase it from, I think, $18,000 when we first started the discussion a couple budgets ago, to $175,000 is significant, and it's really making a big difference. So thank you for shining a light on that.
Great, thank you.
Okay. So as Vice President Ernst indicated, the Thursday dessert forum was sort of a preparation meeting for the ECASB Erie County Association of School Boards Legislative Breakfast that took place on Saturday. So I've provided you all with a handout that was given to us. The ECASB worked with multiple entities at the state level, the New York State Association of School Boards, the local Erie Niagara superintendents, their own board members through Erie County, as well as some consultants, like Dr. Rick Timms and other organizations throughout the state. And they established three priorities. So the first one is, I think the one that gets the most attention, is to establish adequate and equitable funding specifically in the foundation aid formula. So from the governor's budget, he proposed a billion dollars of new money in, of state aid, with only $338 million of that being allocated to foundation aid, which is the largest aid category for school districts. So the action that's being requested from ECASB is to repair the foundation aid formula, which Mrs. Ernst mentioned. You know, there is some caution there, but most districts across the state have seen demographics change from the 2000 census. So there is a push to have at least 2010 census data used in the formula. I know that would be a significant marker for us if that were to happen. They also are looking for a real phase-in of the formula. So, it's estimated that the formula is underfunded by $4 billion. So, most people have suggested a three- or four-year phase-in of that formula. For us, we are owed approximately $5 million if that formula were to be fully funded. So if that $4 billion was put into the existing current formula, our foundation aid would go from roughly $7 million to $12 million, which is significant. So there's a push for a phase-in of that, not to put $4 billion in all at once, but, you know, to look at three or four years.
So, so we know then that we would, you know, the districts that would benefit by it then?
Yes. Yes. And then there's a couple other points there, to reduce the reliance on set-asides, which restrict the use of state funding. So again, put more money into the foundation aid, and don't put it into things like community schools or other set-asides where it restricts its use. And then, there is also money that is owed to districts in the form of prior-year aid claims. And you could wait up to 15 years when you are owed money. That's if they underpaid you in aid. And of course, when you owe them money, they direct deduct it from your payment, but when they owe you money, it could take up to 15 years to get it. So there is data that was provided to us at the Legislative Breakfast that we are owed $542,000 in prior-year claims. But there's never any notification as to whether or not you're going to get it and when, it just either shows up or doesn't from year to year. So there's a push for people to have that paid off and paid up. The property tax cap amendments, you know, our legislators talked, and it was nice to see that the two that represent us, Senator Ransenhoffer and Assemblywoman McMahon, were both at the Legislative Breakfast, so it was nice to have representation there. They do, every, all of the legislators talk about how popular the tax cap is, but there is some hope that maybe there'll be some reform there. As Mrs. Wazinski indicated, we're, it's somewhat driven by CPI. And if CPI is below 2%, then there is a push to say that there's a minimum of 2% in the formula, and if CPI is below that, that we could go up to 2%. So that's one of the, one of the asks, I guess, in the legislative asks here. In addition to that, they want to try to prohibit negative tax caps, which as a board you saw a couple years ago, I think for the 1617 budget in the 1516 school year. And then, reform the tax override process. You know, a lot of times, they compare us to other municipalities, and other municipalities can exceed their tax cap with a simple majority vote of their board, as opposed to a supermajority of the community. So there's a goal, or advocacy effort to, excuse me, revise that. And then, account for enrollment growth in the calculation, which from the data, we've seen, our enrollment is actually one of the more stable ones in the region. Other districts have seen decreases in their enrollment. Ours was pretty steady. I think we had a 2% decrease in a 10-year window that we looked at, where other districts saw, you know, anywhere from 5 to maybe 15% decreases. And of course, I'm, you know, rounding there, but that was a generalization. And then finally, you know, a focus on student health and safety. So flexible grant funding for school safety programs like SRO's, Mental Health Board Nation. You know, not using school district buildings as polling places, which would affect Smallwood and our high school, which are both used for polling places. And then adequately funding programs for mental health, including dedicated funding for mental health in schools, which we all know has become an increasing concern for all of us. So, these priorities, you know, they try to streamline them. We're going to update our advocacy webpage with this information reflective of ECASB. President Steinle and I are meeting with Assemblywoman Karen McMahon on Thursday. We are going to ask Mrs. Wazinski if she can attend the meeting as well, and maybe go through the draft budget that was just presented, because she is a freshman Assembly member, and she did indicate in the meeting we were at that she is listening and trying to learn as much as she can heading into this legislative session. So we think it might be helpful to walk through our budget projections in real time, so to speak, so that she can see what we face in trying to put our budgets together from year to year.
It might be helpful to give a list of cuts that we've had to make over the years.
I think we have that. That's a good idea.
Another thing I will say is when we went with NISBA, you know, they have a similar setup where they have given us legislative priorities, and we've gone around. We went to Representative Higgins and Senator Jill Brand's offices recently, and they didn't actually realize that a negative tax cap was, you know, could actually happen. So, yeah, if you kind of walk through the budget and have, you know, just show them that we actually had that happen, and that it is a possibility, and, you know, the impact of that, they don't necessarily, you know, they're looking at, you know, the whole universe. So explaining to them that that can actually happen really helped.
Yeah, and as you were mentioning that, it reminded me that the reason this is becoming a priority is because it's due to expire, and there's a bill out there that would make it permanent, the tax cap. And that seems to have support. So there is, I think, a need for some reform within that formula and a little bit of flexibility for local decision-making. But that's a good point. I don't think they always realize that when that formula flushes out, it could actually be negative. That's, just as an aside, that's one of the reasons why, you know, Mrs. Wazinski recommends that we do our best to try to keep our debt as steady as possible, because fluctuations in your debt service, in either way, could cause spikes or peaks or valleys in your tax cap calculation. So when you look at long-term planning for construction, you know, the goal is to try to keep that relatively flat, that debt, to keep some consistency in your levy. Well, thank you. I appreciate the time to talk about it. It was a very informative breakfast. Our AEA president, Mr. Davis, attended, along with Dr. Shanahan, Assistant Superintendent, and myself, and President Steinle and Vice President Ernst. So thank you all. Thank you all for attending.
Before we move on, can I just clarify the board self-evaluation? Are we looking to implement that in this school year or for the next school year? Like, we would get it next fiscal year to start working on it prior to our next board retreat?
Where do you see it, then? Where's the best place to?
February, I would think that we would start it, yeah, start it next fiscal year, like, have it in place in July then.
Okay. That seems like a good...
That makes sense.
I understand, in the presentation, yeah.
Great. Good clarification.
Well, then I will need a motion for new business items.
I'll make a motion for new business items, E1, A through G, 2, A through E, 3, B, C, E, G, and H. I'll second.
Okay, any discussion? All those in favor of approving new business items, E1, A through G, 2, A through E, and 3, B, C, E, G, and H, please say aye.
Aye.
Close. Motion carries 7-0. Mrs. Custody, do we follow up action items?
Yes, we do. I have two. The first two contact, I don't know if it's Dr. Warren yet, or Mr. Warren, to add the board avail piece for the 1920 school year, and then to provide a list of cuts due to budget constraints over the years when you have your meeting with the Assemblywoman.
And then invite Mrs. Wazinski to the meeting.
Okay. And we need a motion to convene to executive session. Make a motion to convene to executive session for matters regarding employment of particular persons. You have a second?
I'll second that.
All those in favor of convening to executive session, please say aye.
Aye.
Thank you, everybody, for coming.